Motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, on case number 20150089, I make a motion that we deny the request.
What's that?
Do you want to do the contract with the State of Idaho?
Yeah, that's fine. While you're here?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think there's a motion.
We did it.
Oh, did they?
Did you vote?
Did you vote on denying that request?
I thought I said yes.
I think you said yes.
Oh, you did, okay. I may have missed that one, sorry.
I thought. Thought we did. All right.
Okay, Shantel Laulu, the next thing that we have for you is a State of Idaho contract amendment. What this does is this allows for the contract to extend through April of 2024. And that is pending the procurement of an ITN or an intent invitation to negotiate process for the Department of Health and Welfare in regards to the Crisis Center. So it's not necessarily stating that we will for sure be in this contract until 3, until 4:30 of 2024. It's just in case they don't have the invitation to negotiate process completed by that time, so it'll allow for them to upload the funds into their internal processing center for any invoices, and we'll just continue with our process until they have that complete.
No problem. I worry about the state on a lot of things. They make a lot of commitments and seem to be behind.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the contract amendment with the State of Idaho as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Shantel.
All right. Let's, uh... Kristy, you're only going to be a second, aren't you? Okay, come on up.
Kristy Davenport, Management Assistant, I just wanted to get your approval for the property tax exemption application that will be put online on the 1st of January. Seriously, all I updated was the dates. You'll notice that the, um...oh, I need to change Monday to Tuesday. The deadline date has been moved to the 18th. They are doing that for taxes as well, and from what I understand, it has to do with a holiday back east that is going to be observed on the 17th of April, so tax day for everybody is 18th of April.
Same form we used last year?
Same form, just the dates are changed. So unless there was anything else that you wanted me to update or...
No, I mean, I think it's short enough.
Worked well last year.
Enough information on it to work.
All right.
Thank you. All right, Hal?
Good morning, Commissioner Hal Jensen, Planning Director with Manic County. I'm here, um, basically to turn some time over to Mr. Brad Schröder with Star Corporation and Kelly Reynolds, who are with me. At your invitation, Commissioner Moser, Dan and Danny with Facilities are here. Real quickly, for history, when this occurred, because Sheriff Manu had my telephone number, he called me in a panic on that Saturday. And so we put the wheels into motion, then of course, the following Monday, we met to assess the damage. Things continued to progress. We had hired local consultants to at least get us started at that point sometime down the road. I had contacted three contractors, two of which declined. Star said, yes, we have a specialty team that could take care of this. We specialize in these types of projects. Congratulations and kudos to Kelly. He's handled things very well out there for us and progressed to that point. Because of my past relationship with Mr. Schroeder in the construction industry prior to becoming employed with Manic County, Mr. Schroeder has my personal cellphone number, and he contacts me quite regularly when he has moments of frustration. I'm going to turn the time over to him because of two things. One, we've never really established good lines of communication. There's never been absolute firm contract negotiation. I mean, for all intents and purposes, Star is somewhat on retainer. There are things that are now being uncovered that where do we start and where do we stop relative to the damage as well as existing conditions. And so there are things here that Mr. Schroeder, Mr. Reynolds, will be able to speak to, direct to the Commission. I am asking the Commission to, if they can, have clarity to give direction on how we establish a new line of communication moving this forward to completion.
Brad?
Thanks. I'm Brad Schroeder with Star Corporation. I'm the Operations Manager for Star Corp's East Idaho office. The company is based out of Twin Falls. So Kelly keeps me in the loop of what's going on, but I have a number of different project managers, and that's kind of the chain of command. Kelly is the project manager that's over the crew that kind of does the, I don't know, quick response, random jobs that show up at the jail this time, but most of the time it's places like Lamb Weston or Glenvia Cheese or whatever that, hey, we just had a boiler fall apart or whatever it is, and the plant is down and we need somebody to respond right now. So anyway, that's kind of the background. For the most part, the, um, I guess there's kind of two things. Everything is back up, at least running in a temporary state at this point, and we're on rental boilers and everything like that. Up till now, Star Corporation is paying the bill for the rental boilers and has that agreement with Rocky Mountain in place. So we also need to submit a bill, and I did notice as I was reviewing invoices and getting ready to submit that paperwork, that the service agreement that we have with the county was only from August. I can't remember the start date, but it ended in September. And really, we didn't, we didn't really start work yet, and then, and I didn't, I mean, honestly, I just didn't pay attention to see that that was that way in September. So I figured we probably need to...
Well, thank you.
To get that...
That work's been very much appreciated.
I figured we need to get that contract amended before a bill is submitted, or else it's going to just get hung up anyway. So there's kind of that issue, and then that we need to get addressed. The second part is with this involving an insurance company, I mean, admittedly, we don't deal with insurance companies like ever. This is a first. And so trying to get direction from, you know, the county says this and do this if insurance is going to pay for it, and then it's put Kelly in a spot where he'll talk to the insurance company and, hey, they want to do this, do you pay for that? Well, we can't discuss that with you because that's their insurance policy. And so it's, you know, chain of command wise, we're contracted to the county, but the role that the insurance company is taking has kind of made it where they're directing work sometimes, or sometimes they aren't. They want certain things that the county hasn't necessarily said, this is what you guys need to do, and it's made it difficult for Kelly to feel like he can make comfortable decisions that he's confident in, in knowing that we're doing the right thing, because it's kind of two masters a little bit.
Real quickly, it makes it difficult for Kelly to make the decision because he doesn't want to commit to Star Corporation knowing that they would not be compensated for materials and efforts, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, because the biggest issue is, you know, we got it up and running, and now we're kind of, and the reason I had the conversation with Brad, we're kind of at a stopping point where we can, the big lump sum of money is coming ahead of us as far as new equipment and installation, but I have them wanting, you know, need to give them more bids, estimates, but yet I don't have any sort of drawings. I don't know what they want as far as concrete, what equipment's going in, so it makes it kind of hard for me to do it in like seven and a half, and they just said, you know, can't talk about policy with you. So, yeah, we're doing, at a point now, like say, everything's up and running, and like you said with the boilers, I mean, we can continue to run it, but I see this big waste coming through me and getting marked up, but if that's the way they want to do it, we can, you know, with the temp boilers or any of that stuff, but I just need somebody that I can, that can give me the final, the final say, because I'm just not real comfortable and getting pointed every direction and nobody...
And what are the, the insurance company has requested a number of, I don't know if you'd really call them a quote, but like a budget, or are they like hard quotes?
No, they've been asking me for, for a guess, you know, the first one was, what it's all going to cost, we hadn't even ripped out the concrete, we didn't even know the damage, so, you know, I made a guess, but that was all it was, and then now they're just, they're asking for it again, but still, and I've turned into them, you know, equipment, price, availability on boilers, cooling tower, stuff like that, but still don't have, you know, don't, I'm not sure what, what they're going to go with, and that's where I just see some issues coming up with the county, you know, I don't know what your plans are in the future with things, and I, you know, spend $100,000 on a piece of equipment that maybe is going to be gone in three months versus a county could spend $110,000 on it, and it went in fine with whatever they got planned ahead of time, so, you know, and there's a lot of things like that. So we're just trying to find out where, you know, and everything they've asked is not, there's nothing that we can't do and may happen, we just need to know for sure what it is.
Well, but there has been, I mean, there's been instances where they've said, well, just assume it's a like-for, or told you it's a like-for-like replacement, but like-for-like replacement isn't like code-worthy today because of code changes and stuff like that and the age of what's gone out, and so, I mean, really, it does seem like before the permanent solution starts to go in, there needs to be some professionals, design professionals that provide some specification and some code analysis and, and to give some guidance because, like, we're just contractors. And ultimately, at the end of the day, I don't care if this insurance company likes us or not when we're done with them, like, we don't deal with them again, right? But we would likely have a relationship with the county in some capacity in the future. I mean, it's business that we do, and so we're not interested in trying to jump in and help in a situation when people are, have their boilers explode, right, or their water main heat the building, and then to come out of it with a black eye, I mean, that's just insult to injury at that point, and so we're wanting to make sure we're on the right place.
Hal, remember, Ryan?
Real quickly, one of the items that became a point of confusion is that I was able to contact the original design consultants, mechanical and electrically, of the jail, and they were willing to participate and help with what needed to be done. I was led to believe that the engineering firm that was hired by ICrimp to assess the damage as well as monitor the spending of money, et cetera, who Kelly's been working with, were design professionals that were going to basically make sure that this boiler was commensurate with the existing boiler that now needed to be replaced, et cetera. But I get the distinct impression that that has now become a void. I have not been involved because of my other responsibilities and duties in my, in my job. I backed out once the ICrimp team came on. I just, I've monitored, but I've not been involved in any meetings, et cetera. I'm here to share with you and get the dialogue opened up with Star, but also to help you understand where and why potential communication breakdown has occurred, and then where do we go moving forward? And I'll be glad if you tell me to become involved. We need to get those original consultants back online to assuage Star's concerns, et cetera. I'd be more than glad to, but that's why we're here.
Okay.
And so I've been listening in on the weekly meetings and kind of, I'm no engineer or expert or anything like that, but I, my understanding is ICrimp has contracted with the Sedwick Group to kind of help keep things organized and flowing. And then Seth is the guy's name, from Sedwick, set up the, this relationship with MKA, which is that engineering firm. This should be giving you guys the designs and the layouts and the direction. And from my understanding is they're supposed to be working with ICrimp and making sure that it's all within our policy, and if there's anything above or beyond that in the plans that they develop, that they'd be talking to us, right? And so we would know if there's anything in their plans beyond the policy and we would have to pay for it, we would be talking about that before you guys go into action to execute, right?
Yeah.
So is that, and I guess that's where the breakdown's been, I guess, is with the engineering group to provide you with the plans and the, and the direction? Because there's, yeah, there's like several different companies working on this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And ultimately, the only people that we have a relationship with in writing is the county.
Yeah.
And so like, does the county want us taking direction from them, and then that leaves us in a spot of like, are we going to get paid for doing what that guy says that we don't have a relationship with?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I made the, I asked him out in this meeting exactly what their thing was this week, and he said that they're just there to, to give us a, you know, their two cents, but not to guide us essentially, and I asked him.
Ryan, I want a meeting with ICrimp next week, and we'll come in special for it, and let's, let's get it set up and let's, let's get this cleared up.
Is ICrimp the insurance company?
Yeah, ICrimp's insurance.
And let's, let's get it set up and corrected so that we can give you answers. Until we talk to ICrimp, we really don't have those answers, in my opinion, right now?
Well, what I would also like is, Dan, you're our building guy, put you as point on this project, and get yourself up to speed, and then we can bring Hal in as necessary, because I know Hal's got a full plate, but I think this falls directly under your purview to manage this project and move us forward that way.
Work with Levi. I mean, the coordination back and forth, but you are responsible for all buildings of Manic County. But, so that's, that's what I'll tell you, we'll get a meeting with ICrimp, we'll find out these answers, and if this engineering group isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing, then we'll press ICrimp to get somebody else to make the right decisions or make decisions that we can all follow, and seven leaders, we can't do that.
Yeah, no, and they've got it, they have it, I mean, they're plenty competent of what they're doing, we just need somebody to, to let us know, because right now it's just, they don't know, we don't know, and, and, you know, it could really come to a head when, when we're trying to do the main line, and I'm asking them what kind of material, what sort of inspections do I do? You know, when I'm, when I'm doing these emergency fixes, I do a lot of them, they kind of fall in a different category, but I know, you know, a brand new, 100% new line from building to the road has to be inspected, and I need somewhere to work, and I, that was when I couldn't get a, really a straight answer of where to go or what I, what I needed, and so that's when I talked to Brad and was like, we need to sit back because there's a big chunk of money coming, and we just need to, we need to know, everybody that's there is, is pretty smart at what they're doing, we just need to set up, like you say, that, that chain of command so that it's clear to everybody.
Well, or something that had Kelly concerned, and maybe it isn't a concern, it just seems weird from the world we come in, like, right now, there isn't really anything to do out there until we start going forward, but someone from the, from the insurance company was kind of giving Kelly grief about like, why aren't you here all day, every day? And Kelly's like, we don't even have anybody here. Like, like, we're not doing anything right now, and they're like, no, no, you should be here all the time, and like, he isn't free, you know?
Yeah.
And Kelly's like, they really just want me to like go watch videos in an office trailer all day long?
Part of that, because Levi, our, a guy on site, has been heavily involved, and I think part of it's his personality, right? And just getting into the weeds and getting, and now he's realizing that he can't do his, his job and this at the same time, there's like wanting to kind of step away from the project as, as I think would be appropriate.
For sure.
But, but then it's like, okay, well, we need a project manager that's, that's really organizing, and the understanding was that would be you guys.
Yeah.
Well, the truth of the matter is, none of these decisions could be made without us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and we haven't been involved with it.
And I think like, you said maybe personality-wise, there's, there's a number of times when Kelly would say, like, the guy's, the guy is helpful, but, but like, I will have already called subcontractors and had stuff organized, and then he will show up at a meeting and say, I called this subcontractor and told them to come here, and so, so then it puts Kelly kind of in an awkward spot where like, okay, the, the facilities guy at that building, like, like I don't want to cross with him, but, but he is also calling my subcontractors that I have already called and coordinated with, and so it's a little bit clunky.
And let's get, let's get the contract set up, or our agreement, so it's up to date, and Brian can look through it, and let's, let's get that taken care of quick.
This is a projected answer for this question, but when you meet next week, you go through ICrimp, then how do you want to disseminate that information back to Star? Would you like to meet back with them? Do they...
Honestly, when we set the meeting up, Kelly could come and join.
Okay, that's, that's what I needed to know.
That's all right.
Yeah.
No, I'd like you there, I'd like Hal there, I mean, every, the players, I'd like there, so that everybody's hearing the same thing at the same time, and...
Yeah, because we, you know, and that was what I was worried about, somebody being there all the time, you know, if we're going to have a guy assigned to be there all the time, that's fine, we have, have people that can do that, but, you know, I bumped my schedule when we first talked to Hal, and it was seven weeks that I was clearing my schedule, and we didn't do nothing, just wait on the insurance company, and if I was to bill you guys for seven weeks without us doing anything, even though we already signed an agreement saying, yeah, you guys will pay this, like, there's going to be, you know, problems with us that are here locally and dealing with each other, and that was, that's, that's what I didn't want, you know, relationship we work in, it's fine, so we...
We want you treated right.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't want to have you, but we want to give you the right answers, too.
Well, and ultimately, if you want us to go sit in an office trailer and charge it for it, then I bet you I got volunteers. But, like, most of the time, people have a hard time paying a bill, they don't see the value in, and we want to make sure that that isn't the situation.
And Levi's been a lot of help, he really is, but now that it gets to this point, it's, it's too much, and...
Well, he's not an expert in that.
And this is...
I mean, he's a great individual, but he's not an expert in what we're doing, and that's why you get us there.
This is a pretty sizable construction project.
So Dan, there's your Microsoft project, project.
There you go. And if I need to walk, if he's going to be trying, we can go, I'll walk the whole job with you and get you up to speed, and what's going on, I mean, whatever, down there on the site, all that, that's all, just so you feel like you know a little ahead of time for meetings or whatever.
And real quickly, at this point, I do know that the engineering firm that was hired through ICrimp has been, has leaned on Levi quite heavily, but when it comes to decisions, I, I think that whether it comes from Ryan or from the Commission, I think it would be proper to have a conversation with Levi and just say, leave all of these decisions and the coordination of subcontractors and any of the work to Star Corporation.
Oh, yeah.
And at this point, Levi, you can just take a step back and continue to do your job. When we need that information, we'll ask for that information, but beyond that, that would help, I, I'm interjecting on some things that I've had previous conversation on that I think would help clarify roles and take Levi somewhat out of that equation and leave it to, to those people that are hired to put it back and to coordinate. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, super valuable, appreciate it.
Dan, Danny?
Thank you.
Ryan, we're good?
Okay.
Thank you. We're available next week.
Right, I mean, like, you're not voting anymore. I'll be at that, just let me know whenever it makes work.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get something set up and let everybody know.
For sure. Perfect. Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Shanta?
Good morning, Commissioner, Shanta Crystal, Chief of Cabinet Officer. I have two items before the board today, but first was just an opportunity to discuss any updates on the Safety and Assessment Center. As the deadline approached to get on this meeting, I was uncertain how Tuesday was going to go, but I have no further updates at this time. The clerk mentioned, right, that he had gotten with Dan, and getting that together, I am hoping to gather up. Todd was also going to go back and relook at the numbers as requested, and I am hoping that that crew will be able to have a proposed remodel budget that will potentially go over what is allowed in that grant on the 5th, the next work section of the new calendar year. Okay, the other item is just a general procurement update I have for the board. I have three projects that I would like to review quickly. The first is the Event Center Firework Show. That one is moving right along, and the contractor questions are due just at the first of the year on the 2nd of January. The second one is the Jail Detention Center Roof Project. We received no questions, and those proposals are due just after the beginning of the year on the 9th. We do, I am a little nervous that we haven't had any questions or responses from any of our contractors. We know that this is a tight field with limited labor, so I have reached out to my experts to have personal invitations of please help us out. So we're hoping that, to get a little more contractor involvement is what we're hoping for, but we'll see how that plays out by the 9th of January. The last one is that Santa did indeed deliver HVAC units.
Oh, wow.
Finally. They have the material, but, right, Mother Nature is not playing as well as Santa Claus is, and they are not currently willing to get up on the roof in minus degree weather, and, right, we totally understand that. We're going to do some of the interior work, Levi has scheduled, some of the interior stuff to be done, and then just as soon as Mother Nature will allow, they'll get a schedule to get those put on, but they have arrived, which is phenomenal. So that one will finally be buttoned up here shortly. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, glad to hear we have a...
On the fuel reduction grant contractor, where are we at with that? You're still gathering specifications, or where are we at on that?
So last time I spoke with Charity, she did send me kind of her shell of her bid specs that she had, and I reviewed that. It follows really closely to our process that we have here. I did have some questions and things that I had reached out to her, and then as far as I know, they were waiting to hear back that scope of services back from the state was the last thing I knew we were waiting on, to make sure that that was approved through the state to move forward with that bidding of that.
And did you talk to her about, I think what you and I talked about, about being able to have equipment on site within a certain amount of time, and...
You know what? I did not. I did not. I will follow up with her about...
And a resume of projects of this size that have been completed?
So along with that, that is one piece that I had asked her as I reviewed her solicitation. That's one piece that I couldn't quite understand is what they were asking for, for review. To me, they talk about having experience and things like that, but they don't spell out how they want that contractor to show it, so that is something that I talked to her about, but not specifically having a timeframe, right, that you were going to mobilize and have equipment on site, because those, that grant does have a deadline, so we will need to be able to be in line with that, so we do want to get it moving forward. But I'll reach out specifically about the deadline to have mobilization going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Resolution Number 2022-96, approving tax cancellation requests.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2022-96. That's presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next, we have, this was the one that we had Tuesday, there was a question on the, this letter of cancellation for review. The Gate City Christian Church, they actually come and appeared before us...
Oh, that's right.
...in July, but it got missed, and that's why it's back on here this way.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the pro- specifically for RPRCP AA 030403, Gate City Christian Church.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Yeah.
All right. Check request form.
Is that one for two million?
That's for pathology.
We need to hold off on that one. I thought I asked Kristy and you to pull it from...
It wasn't here, but it was still in the pack.
Okay. Yeah, I asked him to take it out.
She sent me an email about pulling it out last night.
Yeah. I think we need to have a bigger discussion before the, plus we've got some reporting information that we need to talk about before we write that check, too.
Okay. Like I say, it was just, the only paper I had left.
It got attached early and didn't get taken out, so.
Yeah, it wasn't on here, but, but I'd seen it earlier, too, so I wanted to confirm. So with that being said, Merry Christmas to everyone and...